I'd like to call the Mentor City Council Regular Meeting of Tuesday, March 21st, 2017, to order. The invocation will be given this evening by Councilman Kirchner.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in the wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Mr. Krieger.
Here.
Mr. Landik.
Here.
Mr. Marne.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Mrs. Dowling.
Here.
Councillors in receipt of the minutes of the work session of March 7th, 2017.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
And the regular meeting of March 7th, 2017.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
At this time, I'd like to turn over the podium to Chief Knight, who has some special presentations for us.
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. Appreciate the time you've given me this evening. Annually, we like to acknowledge our employees who have been voted by their peers as Officer of the Year and Civilian of the Year. And then we also have one additional award we'll be giving tonight. First, I'd like to call up our Civilian of the Year, who is one of our automotive technicians that keeps our fleet running that we'd get nowhere without this guy, Rob. Would you come up, please? Rob Rodriguez. Briefly, from his letter of nomination, Rob's worked for the police department as a mechanic since January 2012. He's been a key player in our maintenance program, helped transition the police fleet from the old style to the new style on VIX and to the interceptors and to the new SUV fleet as of this year. He's also helped exchange out several different radio systems, antenna systems, computer systems, install the current camera and wireless mic systems in all patrol units, exchanged all the lights and LED lighting and light bars in all these projects. He always steps up in all challenges that arise in a department and keeps us running 24/7, 365 days a year. He's a true example of a person who is ready and willing to help protect the men and women who protect us by ensuring that the equipment they use is at 100% of its capability whenever it's needed. I think it says a lot about the job Rob and both Aldo, that their peers, the police officers, think that highly of them and the job they do. And I can tell you just from talking with all the other chiefs in Lake County that they're very envious of what we're able to do, that we actually build our own fleets. We don't send them out to get built when they're new, so they do a great job. And so, congratulations, Rob.
Thank you.
I'd like to have our Officer of the Year, Patrolman Brian Vernick, come forward, please. Patrolman Vernick joined the police department in 2006. He's been here 10 years and has proven himself as an exceptional employee. In addition to his regular duties, he's been a member of the SWAT team. He's been on day shift in 2016, made over 45 arrests, including eight prosecutor determinations. It reflects the quality of investigations that Patrolman Vernick conducts. One case in particular, he received a letter of commendation in 2016 for arresting seven suspects for robbery, aggravated burglary, obstructing official business, and tampering with evidence. He obtained confessions from two suspects and then went to the suspect's apartment, where he located two additional suspects hiding under a bed in a closet. He located stolen property, obtained confessions, and arrested a total of seven people. The thoroughness from the start to finish on this case is an example of his work. Patrolman Vernick also is one of those rare people who has a very strong work ethic that we don't see as much today. In over 10 years with the department, he's only used a couple hours of sick time. Always comes to work, never takes shortcuts, and I just checked recently, in 2016, he did not use one hour of sick leave. So, he's there every day, and we congratulate him and thank him. Congratulations. I'd like to call up Patrolman Dan Shaw. Dan just had surgery the other day. He's looking pretty good, isn't he? As many of you know, Dan's been in the military and he's going to be deployed again soon. As part of that, at approximately 11:30 PM on February 17th, he was returning from military training in Missouri, and he observed a vehicle traveling at a high rate of speed on Interstate 670 in Franklin County outside of Columbus. The vehicle passed him on the right, left the roadway, and struck the utility pole. He stopped his vehicle to render assistance. He approached the driver's side of the vehicle and observed that the driver was laying over the steering wheel, unresponsive. He cut the seatbelt off of the driver as the vehicle caught fire. With the aid of another off-duty law enforcement officer from that area, he pulled the driver to safety as the driver's legs caught on fire and the vehicle became fully engulfed in flames. He extinguished the fire to the crashed victim's legs, which were badly burned, and remained with the victim until further medical assistance arrived. He was later advised by Deputy Begler of the Franklin County Sheriff's Department that the driver of the vehicle had lived and that he had saved his life. The criteria for Exceptional Service Award is that it's given for any act or series of acts that has a long-term impact on furthering a goal's interest in a state or department. His actions have definitely had an impact on the state or department and is extremely deserving of this award. Congratulations. And Dan just recently got this note from this young man's dad, and I'd like to read it. It says, "Daniel, my name is Don Asher. I'm the father of Travis Asher, the man who pulled from a burning car. I've been trying to call you, but no success. I wanted to thank you for probably saving my son's life. There's no greater gift you could have given me than my son's life. I know he feels the same way. Travis is still in the hospital, getting treatment for his burns and broken leg and ankles. He has months of surgery and rehabilitation to go, but he's in good spirits, making progress each day. I hope if I come upon an accident as you did, I have the same courage as you. God bless you and yours, and thank you so very much." That concludes my presentation, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. New legislation, Ordinance Number 17-0-24.
An ordinance to authorize advances of funds and revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filippiak.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Malinowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. Filippiak. Well, this is very anticlimactic to that.
Yes.
You have before you legislation that incorporates approximately a $1.8 million temporary cash advance of the city's general fund to five separate funds, as noted in the staff report, the largest being the $1.3 million to get our road program up and running and full steam ahead. I recommend approval. Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Ordinance Number 17-0-24 has been approved. Ordinance Number 17-0-25.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with American Fireworks to provide fireworks displays on or about July 4th, 2017, and during City Fest and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filippiak.
Thank you, Madam President. And Mr. Kaminski, please.
Thank you. Two bid proposals were received for the July 4th and City Fest fireworks display in the amount of $25,000 for July 4th and $3,500 for City Fest. Based upon their review, American Fireworks submitted the best proposal for both shows. The shows were based on the number of shells and the size of the shells as well. The proposals also included the $10 million in liability insurance. American Fireworks was selected based on their proposal, and we have worked with them in the past. It is therefore recommended that a contract be awarded to American Fireworks. Thank you.
Gentlemen.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Ordinance Number 17-0-25 has been approved. Ordinance Number 17-0-26.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Warren Fire Equipment of Warren, Ohio, for the purchase of 41 sets of Honeywell Morning Pride turnout gear and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filippiak.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'll ask Chief Searls to discuss this briefly. But the one thing I would point out is that thanks to the tremendous work that both the fire department and our grants coordinator were able to bring forward on their applications, 100% of these costs will be offset by grant dollars. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Filippiak. Madam President, members of council, I'm again pleased to report that we received a grant from FEMA in 2016 for the purchase of 41 sets of structural firefighting gear. That's the gear that our firefighters wear, their coats and pants. The Safety Committee has recommended that we continue to outfit our firefighters with Morning Pride turnout gear. I support that recommendation, as Morning Pride has served us well. It's the gear that we're currently using now. The gear is found on state bid, and with your approval, we plan to purchase the gear at state bid pricing at a cost of $2,028 per set. The gear will be purchased from Warren Fire Equipment, a company that has supplied our department before and we're very satisfied with. It is therefore my recommendation that 41 sets of structural firefighting gear be purchased from Warren Fire Equipment in Warren, Ohio, at a total price of $83,148. And as the manager mentioned, this is 100% covered by the FEMA grant award. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Gentlemen.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance Number 17-0-26 has been approved. We have an addendum to this evening's agenda, Ordinance Number 17-0-27.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Mentor Harbor Yacht Club for the purpose of sharing costs and expenses attributed to dredging, repair, and maintenance of the Mentor Lagoon's navigable water channel and designated waterway and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filippiak.
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. Mr. Zampetro, please.
Thank you, Mr. Filippiak. As council is aware, last year, our dredging agreement that was approved in '07 was rescinded by the city. As a result of the calculation in that agreement, the city's corresponding insurer had gotten almost as high as 80% of the cost of the dredge. Since that time, we've been in negotiations with the Mentor Harbor Yacht Club and have reached a tentative agreement to establish a firm cost for dredging in which the city would pay 56% of the dredge costs. Mentor Harbor Yacht Club would be responsible for 44%. What you have in front of you is essentially the same contract that was approved in 2007, excuse me, in 2007, with that significant change in terms of the calculation. Some additional language that has been added into this has also clearly set forth the prevailing wage requirement as provided under Ohio law. I remain available to answer any questions that council may have.
Gentlemen.
Move to suspend.
Mr. Krieger.
I have a question. Under the agreement, we were supposed to get estimates of the dredging by December 31st. Did we get those estimates?
Mr. Kaminski. Yes, we did.
We did? And what are those?
I don't recall if, Tom, that we do have the packet that we get in the end of December every year.
The process is, in fact, the original agreement stipulated that those would come in by October typically. December is really an outlier in terms of anticipating future dredge costs. We are in the middle of the pre-dredge survey this week. We have the city as representative on that boat auditing the dredge marks. Mr. Kaminski, and I believe so far this year, the initial indication is this will not be a heavy year as we've had in years prior.
I guess what I mean by not a heavy year is, I mean, is we're paying 56% of $500,000, $100,000?
I believe the estimate, and I'm just going off memory, was $112,000 for this year.
Okay, and that's less than the previous year, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
As I said, it was a light, we anticipate a lighter year this year.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance Number 17-0-27 has been approved. Resolution Number 17-R-105.
A resolution declaring April 8th, 2017, as family play day in the city of Mentor and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filippiak.
Thank you, Madam President, and this resolution before you was really inspired by council's passage last year of Lego Day, which was really intended to honor the life of Mentor resident Jacob Goss, who was at that time battling with a fatal illness. And it's just kind of reminded all of us on just how important it is to spend important time with our families. And so, we'd like this to become a tradition in the community. Obviously, it's non-binding, but it encourages everyone to take some time off, set the cellphones down for a day, maybe pick up a board game or whatever the case might be, but engage in some good old-fashioned type of recreation and family time. So, we would ask for council's consideration of adopting April 8th, the day as family play day in our city.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Resolution Number 17-R-105 has been adopted. Resolution Number 71-R-106.
A resolution declaring the month of April, 2017, as child abuse prevention month in the city of Mentor and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filippiak.
Nothing more really to add, it's just adding our voice to those of all other communities who promote the ability of children to live and thrive within our community and all others without the threat of child abuse. We support, this is also intended to support those efforts of the Lake County Children's Services Board, who do such a fine job of taking care of our children.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Resolution Number 17-R-106 has been adopted. Second reading, we have none. Third reading, we have none. Manager's report.
Thank you, council. We do have one pavement open cut request for council to consider. It is from Aqua, Ohio, for the replacement of a six-inch water line with an eight-inch water line on Willow Brook Drive, and we would recommend approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Yes. Resolution Number 17-R-106 has been adopted. Resolution Number 71-R-106.
A resolution declaring the month of April, 2017, as child abuse prevention month in the city of Mentor and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filippiak.
Nothing more really to add, it's just adding our voice to those of all other communities who promote the ability of children to live and thrive within our community and all others without the threat of child abuse. We support, this is also intended to support those efforts of the Lake County Children's Services Board, who do such a fine job of taking care of our children.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Resolution Number 17-R-106 has been adopted. Second reading, we have none. Third reading, we have none. Manager's report.
Thank you, council. We do have one pavement open cut request for council to consider. It is from Aqua, Ohio, for the replacement of a six-inch water line with an eight-inch water line on Willow Brook Drive, and we would recommend approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Resolution Number 17-R-106 has been adopted. Resolution Number 71-R-106.
A resolution declaring the month of April, 2017, as child abuse prevention month in the city of Mentor and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filippiak.
Nothing more really to add, it's just adding our voice to those of all other communities who promote the ability of children to live and thrive within our community and all others without the threat of child abuse. We support, this is also intended to support those efforts of the Lake County Children's Services Board, who do such a fine job of taking care of our children.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Yes. Resolution Number 17-R-106 has been adopted. Second reading, we have none. Third reading, we have none. Manager's report.
Thank you, council. We do have one pavement open cut request for council to consider. It is from Aqua, Ohio, for the replacement of a six-inch water line with an eight-inch water line on Willow Brook Drive, and we would recommend approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Resolution Number 17-R-106 has been adopted. Resolution Number 71-R-106.
A resolution declaring the month of April, 2017, as child abuse prevention month in the city of Mentor and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filippiak.
Thank you, Madam President, and this resolution before you was really inspired by council's passage last year of Lego Day, which was really intended to honor the life of Mentor resident Jacob Goss, who was at that time battling with a fatal illness. And it's just kind of reminded all of us on just how important it is to spend important time with our families. And so, we'd like this to become a tradition in the community. Obviously, it's non-binding, but it encourages everyone to take some time off, set the cellphones down for a day, maybe pick up a board game or whatever the case might be, but engage in some good old-fashioned type of recreation and family time. So, we would ask for council's consideration of adopting April 8th, the day as family play day in our city.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Resolution Number 17-R-105 has been adopted. Resolution Number 71-R-106.
A resolution declaring the month of April, 2017, as child abuse prevention month in the city of Mentor and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filippiak.
Nothing more really to add, it's just adding our voice to those of all other communities who promote the ability of children to live and thrive within our community and all others without the threat of child abuse. We support, this is also intended to support those efforts of the Lake County Children's Services Board, who do such a fine job of taking care of our children.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
the same manner as they were, it would be difficult to argue that, about conditions. So, this is an example of where that's helping us to have a, talk, speak a common language with them with respect to our local roads. So, Mr. Landig was a big supporter of that and made that recommendation to us in the past, and it was a good one, because I think the engineers also.
Someone that drives it every day and the people that drive it every day, I'm sure I'll tell you, I don't know if they're going to be happy.
Mr. Kirschner?
And for the people that ride on bikes.
They appreciate it more.
But also, I think Scott and Matt deserve a lot of credit, because I know there were some naysayers out there that questioned the resolve of these guys to get this done. And I know they were persistent, and I congratulate them for getting this done, and as well as the administration.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
On Murray Road, just to give the residents an update, I know Mr. Swigger helped me out a lot on that. I was getting calls. You're saying the completion is going to be done in July. That's probably restoration of the lawns and, yeah, the piping's done, correct? I think the piping's very close to being done on that road.
By the end of the month, right, Dave?
Yeah, I think the main line work is complete, but we still have some catch basins and side yard drain installs.
We're close, yeah. And you can't restore until the weather's proper. So, I appreciate that. Thanks.
Okay. Clerk's correspondence.
Counsel is in receipt of a liquor permit notification of change of stock ownership for Mentor Sumo, Inc., and also in receipt of Mentor Municipal Court Report, month in February 2017.
Commission and committee reports. Counsel's in receipt of the meeting minutes of the Board of Building and Zoning Appeals, January 10th, 2017 meeting, Municipal Planning Commission, February 9th, 2017 meeting, and the Tree Commission, February 15th, 2017 meeting.
Old business.
Madam President?
Mr. Blake.
Ken, do we have a sense of the timeline for the signal installation, Whalers Cove and the tandem signal to go with it at Springbrook Park? I know that we had talked about the pole ordering, and that maybe we might be able to find those somewhere locally and speed up the installation. Do we have any update on that, on when we could look for those to be up and running?
Mr. Swigger?
Sure. We are currently getting a price and a schedule on poles. We got one quote indicating about a nine-to-eleven week order time for galvanized poles. We're getting a second quote on decorative poles at the same location. So, we think that's just going to add a couple of weeks possibly to the purchase, to the delivery time. So, currently in the process of doing that, we put together a preliminary design. We're working on putting plans and specifications together. So, we hope to be doing that this summer. So, I don't have a completion date at this point.
We're a little bit closer to being able giving a, he'll be, the engineering department will be working out a schedule, and I'll share that with council. I'll report that to council as soon as we have a little bit better handle on the procurement of the poles. Our preference is to go with a decorative pole unless that dramatically sets. If it's a matter of a couple of weeks, that's not the biggest deal. If it's a matter of months, then we might reconsider that.
I think we had talked about the decorative poles and the sandy soil there as maybe being an abrasive to the finish. Is that something that we wouldn't have to worry about with that as opposed to galvanized?
I think with the park, with the development of the park, with less open soil in the area, we'd probably have less of a concern.
Less of a concern. So, it sounds to me like I heard the word "summer," which is a lot better than nine months of ordering the poles and waiting for that. So, summer would be a nice.
That's our hope, yes.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay, new business. Okay, hearing none. We have one person this evening that would like to speak before council, Arnold Stanko. Please come forward and give us your name and address, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Council members in the city of Mentor, my name is Arnold Stanko. I spoke briefly with Mentor Councilman Bruce Landig over the phone, and he guided me to come to this meeting and present to you. I'm a Marine veteran, Vietnam veteran. I'm the chairman of the Perry Veterans and the family members that will be hosting the original replica of the Washington, D.C. Vietnam Combat Veterans Memorial, the Moving Wall. With me is Ernie Gant. He's a Navy Vietnam veteran, and he's our fundraising coordinator. We're bringing the Vietnam wall to Perry, Perry High School. And that journey started probably two years ago. And when we met with Perry High School representatives, they were for it. They were happy to do this. And in meeting with them, we also did a military wall of honor at the school for all the students that went to Perry High School and went into the military. And we have roughly like 400 names now. And what we did, we did a lot of research. We had it in the newspapers and radio and everything, researching families that had, maybe had names of their kids or somebody from their family from many years ago that served, went to Perry High School and served. And what we did, the high school gave us two large bookcases, eight-foot by 12-foot bookcases, took the glass out of them. And what we did, we had posters made, put inside each, there's four, three sections across, three on the bottom. And we give a section to each branch of service, Navy, Marines, and all that. And what we did, we took a picture that represented each branch and put it inside there. And then what we did, for each branch, for every student that went into the Navy, their names were put on a dog tag and put on this wall. And that's what we did for all the branches. So, and then we had, we had 16 Perry KIA's killed in action. We had 15 of them out of the Civil War alone that went to Perry, went to school there, and they were killed. And we had one that was killed in World War II in France. So, we did a special section for those with a painting or a mural of the Arlington Cemetery and the headstones going up, and their names engraved on it. We had a ceremony that lasted maybe an hour dedicating the wall. We had about 300 people that showed up at the high school to see this, and it turned out very well. It cost roughly about $8,000 to put this on. We got the flags up, all the flags, the POW. We did a little thing for the POW, MIAs. And it turned out fantastic. And that led me to say, okay, I'd like to bring the Vietnam wall to Perry now. School superintendent, Jack Thompson, said, absolutely. We're all for it. We'll support it. We'll do what we need. So, we're going to bring it to Perry September 21st through the 25th of this year. Now, our objective is to have a new wall in Perry. It gives the communities in local Vietnam and all veterans and family members the opportunity to participate, visit, and reflect in a meaningful way the sacrifice that were made in Vietnam by the American fighting men and women for world freedom. To use the wall as a teaching tool, because we're going to have the students come out. We got Rolling Thunder. They have organization that teaches, goes into school and teaches kids about Vietnam and the history of the Vietnam War. 2.59 million Americans served in Vietnam. There are eight women listed on that wall that were killed in action out of 7,500 late women that served. Approximately 1,300 are still POW, MIAs. Over 58,479 were killed in action. Of those, of those, 53 KIA's were here in Lake County alone. Of those 53, 10 were from the city of Mentor. The Vietnam Memorial Exhibit is going to be open 24 hours at Perry High School on the 21st through the 25th. We're going to have opening ceremonies on the 21st at 7:00 and closing ceremonies on the 25th at 6:00. We're asking the city of Mentor for monetary donation or considerations to help promote the historical memorial by honoring those that made ultimate sacrifice. We will leave, I got some flyers here with you to maybe help advertise on your city website or other websites to inform the public of our communities of this event coming up. I just want to say thank you for allowing us to present this, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Well, thank you for your service.
And thank you for doing this. It's been a long, how long has it been since the wall has been in Lake County? It's been a number of years, I believe.
Yeah, it's been, yeah, it's been a while.
Long time.
We had it twice at Lakeland. I know I participated in that one. But this is, yeah. And we just want to get the message out to in our communities all around to come and visit this, because this is the original replica. It's the half-size of the Washington. It's been around since 1985. It's, and if you've never been to it, it's.
Madam President, I want to thank you so much for serving too. As a child, my brother was in Vietnam, and we prayed for you guys, and he made it out of there alive. And he lost a lot of friends from Mentor High School. And I'm sure Janet would know. She was in school with my brother, and we appreciate everything you're doing. It's beautiful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ernie, you got anything? We've done some fundraising, and we're doing some more. If anybody's got any suggestions, our names and phone numbers and everything are on the flyer. You can also get ahold of Perry High School. Scott Nedweski, who is the assistant principal, he's our liaison for the school, and he's been involved in this thing over the last two years and stuff. So, he, you got any questions about the school? If you want to come out and see that wall inside the school, it's really breathtaking.
Looking forward to it. You have flyers for us this evening?
Yes. I only have three with me, ma'am.
We'll make copies.
And if, if there's a way we can help do things in the city of Mentor, we'd be more than glad to come out, work with anybody, and get this thing promoted, and hopefully have a big turnout.
Great. Appreciate it.
Move to adjourn. Second.
I'll move.
Thank you, guys.